Good evening. This is the Design Review Commission meeting, special meeting on Monday, March 10th, 2025. And I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:30. With that, Vice Chair Salo, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Damian, will you please do the roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Chang?
Present.
Commissioner Two?
Present.
Thank you. Chair Romo?
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Salo?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Thank you.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on Cable Channel 3 and on our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak. Number one, public comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Design Review Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Persuaded to the Brown Act, the Design Review Commission cannot answer any questions or take any actions until such time as the matter may appear on an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Design Review Commission, please fill out the card, speaker card, that is available at the back table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to the recording secretary. Speakers will be called upon to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Number two, consent. Oh, do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Number two, consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the Design Review Commission or public respect. I request a separate discussion. Does anyone have anything to pull on the consent calendar, Commissioner Two?
Oh, no, I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Chang?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
Nothing, thank you.
Have we requested, have we received any requests from the public to pull any items?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So with that, we can have a motion?
I approve to approve the consent agenda, item number eight.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Two?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Am I allowed to say yes even though I was not at the last meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's to approve the format.
Okay, yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Five As, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item number three, public hearing. Sam?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This evening, there are two public hearing items. Copies of the agenda in the staff report are available on the city's website at www.sangabrocity.com and also on the table that is by the entrance. Anybody wishing to speak on an item this evening, please speak out, fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording secretary, which is Damian this evening. And as mentioned, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. For each item tonight, staff will provide a brief summary of the staff report, followed by questions to the applicant, and then a public hearing will be opened. And once public hearing is closed, the commission will move to deliberation. And so with that, Madam Chair, staff is ready to present item A.
Thank you. Item A is 140 West Valley Boulevard, planning case number MSP 21006, updated master sign program, applicant student, studio ads.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, the application, the subject site is 140 West Valley Boulevard. The case number is MSP 21-006. Again, the next few slides staff will go through relatively quickly. The commission has seen these slides before. The subject property is located south of Valley Boulevard, west of Delmar Avenue. The zoning for the site is mixed-use transit-oriented development, that's MUT, within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area. And surrounding properties are also zoned for zoning that is within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area. This is a site plan showing the existing property. It's an existing site that's approximately 12.6 acres in size, currently developed with an approximate 218,000 square foot commercial plaza. The existing site layout, the building footprint, the parking area, all will remain the same. What's shown on the site plan is the location of the proposed signage this evening, which includes two pylon signs that's detailed in the teal color. There's also two vehicle wayfinding sign that is detailed in the purple color. Also, the plaza identification sign, which is at the corner location on the site. And then also the wall signs and the blade signs that will be discussed in the next few slides. So again, this is a photo to the left of how the plaza was before the exterior paint and to the right, it's a photo simulation, but also how the property currently looks with the new paint palette. So the proposal as mentioned to the commission this evening, it is an update to the entire master sign program. The current existing program, again, is a program from 1993, so it is over 30 years, the existing sign program. This program has come before the commission on October 28th and also on February 24th. The commission provided comments to the applicant and continued the item to address those comments. And so the criteria presented to the commission this evening is a little bit more of a simplified version from what the commission has seen before in the past two meetings. Essentially, it includes criterias for the wall signs, the blade signs, the wayfinding sign, the pylons, and the identifications. So we're starting here with the criteria for the wall signs. Essentially, the criteria will allow for a mix of channel letters, front lit, reverse, and halo. Both uppercase and lowercase are allowed in any font styles and the color is not limited. Next is blade signs. This is new to the center as well as vehicle wayfinding signs. So this is a part of the proposed criteria. And as mentioned, two pylon signs, and it was shown earlier on the site plan, will be at the entries to the center, one off of Valley Boulevard and the second off of Delmar Avenue. And then also the parking entrance sign, this the commission has seen before, no changes to the proposal. And then lastly, the project identification sign from the first meeting in October, the applicant has provided some photo to show what the sign will look like, the characters, how they will be installed and how they will stand, essentially to allow for pedestrians to stand next to it, to even, to even sit on top of the text if that is the case, as shown in the criteria. And so the proposed master sign program, it is consistent with the city's general plan goals, both in land use, economic development, and community design. Notice of this meeting was posted at the site as well as a notice in the San Gabriel Sun and also posted at City Hall, the post office, library, and the city's website. The criteria was reviewed per California Environmental Quality Act and is categorically exempt per guidelines under Section 15301, existing facilities. So the recommendation before the commission this evening is to adopt the resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number MSP 21-006 for the updated master sign program to the existing commercial plaza, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any clarifying questions from any of the commissioners? And we do have materials board here, if anyone would like to see them as well. Commissioner Two, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do have one clarifying question. So the list of the signage included for this approval package, does it include the project wall signage? So all the tenant logos?
Yes.
Okay, so is there any page that contains the wall signage, design criteria in the package?
Yes, it should be, it should be sheet three.
Yes. Okay, found it, thank you.
Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I guess, two quick questions. One is that once the master sign program is approved, the individual business that come to City Hall can obtain their building permit over the counter, as long as they follow what's in the master sign program.
That is correct.
Correct. So it will not come back to this body. Okay, that's good. And on, I guess, maybe I'll ask a question on, to the applicant later. On sheet 26, I just thought that the overall, the directional signs for vehicular traffic, I thought the rendering shows that is, maybe the proportion isn't quite right. Is that, is that five foot tall to the bottom of the sign and it's eight foot tall overall? I don't think the detail scale drawing and the rendering is in the same scale, maybe, on that.
Yes, Commissioner Chan, the applicant can address that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Did you mention that there was a, the way, a way sign as well? Your presentation?
The, yes.
That's just, one way sign just for vehicles?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
No questions for staff, thank you.
Okay. I do have one quick question. I see that the 99 Ranch Market will have their color scheme on the large sign. However, on sheet 11, on the building itself, it's not shown in the 99 Ranch Market colors. Is that something that the developer is proposing at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair, the sheet 11 is provided to show the inspiration behind the criteria design. However, as mentioned in the presentation, the wall signs are not limited in color. So what is going to be submitted by the 99 Ranch and the applicant can clarify, this evening, the colors would be similar to the pylon sign, corporate colors.
Thank you, I just wanted to get that clarified. It is now time for public comment. Have we received any public comments here or online?
No public comment at this time.
Okay. Is the developer here and would like to make a presentation? Welcome.
Hi there, is this working? Yes. Good evening, everybody. My name is Milton Solomon. I'm one of the founders and partners of ADS. Studio ADS just happens to be the design arm of the holding company. And very happy to be able to stand here and make a presentation to you. However, we're very anxious about it because this has been going on for a long time and we're thrilled that we have a recommendation of approval. And if there are any questions that you have, I would be happy to help and go through any of the questions that you do have, so.
Thank you very much. I just want to let you know that we take our roles here very seriously. And I know this has been continued, but part of that was, we were responding to what was submitted and the submittals weren't quite there.
I understand.
So right now, we're trying to get that and I think that's one of the reasons why we all made ourselves available for the special meeting.
Thank you and I appreciate it. And listen, I understand. I'll be honest with you, I've been, just in this country alone, this is my fortieth year. And I have stood in front of many design review boards and city councils and planning commissions and I'm happy to help.
Great, thank you. All right. Commissioner Two, do you have any clarifying questions for the applicant?
Yes, I think we had reviewed this project for a couple times.
You're right.
And we're still processing to understand the full scope of the design. So can you let me know that for those, the wall sign, for the tenant, individual tenants, so there's no such criteria for the color and, and the material or like, so the overall criteria would just for, based on the individual tenant's own logo, right? Is that, is that right?
So, correct. If you have a look at the program, the MSP, the master sign program, and you come to the tenant section, it's very difficult to design for each individual tenant. So what we do is we put out guidelines as how many square feet they're allowed, based on the size of their frontage, their storefrontage, and that'll tell us the size of the sign. As far as the tenant copy or the words that they put on there, their limit is going to be in the amount of square footage or the area that they have. And I can assure you of one thing, that all of the, all of the approvals come through Studio ADS and we have, I'll be honest, we're very strict about what actually will be fabricated and eventually put up on that storefront. It's very important that there's a consistency of size, a reference to each storefront, so that one tenant doesn't overpower the tenant next door. And we have a consistency all the way throughout. It's something that wasn't on the building before because it was almost like a free-for-all. Whereas now, there are limitations that you have written into the MSP. And like you said, Commissioner, they will have to strict, strictly adhere to those sizes and that criteria so that they can go and get a permit over the counter.
Okay, so the, so it would be approval process through your office for individual tenant signs?
It'll come to us, we'll have a look at it. Listen, nine times out of 10, there will be an approval. And the reason is, we are not here to tell anybody what they can and they cannot do as far as their wording is concerned. But what we can do is help on the design and make sure that, what are the, what, it's sometimes a little bit difficult to, to put in, in black and white, this is what it's going to be. You've got, what, 30, 40, 50 tenants there, you can rest assured they're going to be 30 to 50 different designs. The whole, the important part of the master sign program is to make sure that there's consistency with each tenant regarding the size that they could do, what they can do, and how they put it up, and the quality of the signs.
Right, right.
And I can, and the holding company, which is called Sunny Skies, that's TAWA, you see the, the T A W and the T A W A, they are very strict as far as the quality is concerned.
Okay, yeah, I just trying to understand what's the criteria for you guys to work in. So apparently, it looks like the square footage is the one major.
Very important.
Okay. The confusion was caused by some of the rendering, it only like showing on the building facade just says tenant name.
Correct.
And they all in the same form, the same color. So I wanted to understand if that's what you guys trying to do or a individual tenant has their own like corporation, their own logo branding.
So if you have a look on the page five, sheet five, as far as colors are concerned, it says that signs may incorporate, incorporate regionally and nationally recognized colors and logos. Colors should be selected to provide sufficient contrast against the building and background colors. Sign colors should be compatible with the, and complement, building and background colors. It, so there's a lot that goes into it for each individual sign, but it's impossible to put it into a, to a master sign program.
Yes, understood. So that's clarified, just one image I saw that all the tenant side, the same color, the same.
Okay. Not, it's not meant to be that.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Mr. Chang?
Thank you, Chair. Just a few questions. On the master sign program, I heard you answered, the governing body and, and your contract with the ownership stays with the selection and design of each individual tenant sign? Or it's gonna be hinge on how the applicant comes into City Hall and, and will maintain this package so they can work against your criteria? How involved is your office as far as design and approval?
A tenant won't come here to get an approval without, first of all, having a signature from the landlord. Won't happen. So it specifically says here that they have to submit their plans to the landlord and if necessary, they will discuss with us. If they feel that it looks good, great, they'll sign it off and they'll come to you. If not, they will get involved and we either make some changes or redesign it completely.
Yeah, so if I understand correctly, the landlord holds that signature approval process.
Yes, absolutely.
Of having that signage going to, to the building.
Yes.
As a tenant. And not your office. Your office will not be involved in the review or the design of individual tenant signage.
We're involved, but we won't be able to sign off a drawing and submit it to you. It has to come from the landlord.
Okay, so the landlord approve the proposal first?
Yes.
Before they go to City Hall? And I guess, um...
In other words, Samantha would be within her rights to say, you can't submit this, I don't see a signature from the landlord. It's that simple.
Well, it so happened, I was involved in the original building back about 30 years ago. And, and I guess at that time, we, we let the landlord understand what they want. But sometimes what the landlord understands or what their landlord and the tenants agreement may or may not meet the city's overall vision and, and the requirement. And that's how this master sign program criteria comes out. And so the city will be able to at least have the final say of approval and non-approval. I guess my question is, even the tenant, the landlord signs it, it does not automatically meet the city counters requirement as Samantha would it? If the owner signs it, that the landlord signs it, approve, does that mean that they automatically get that signage approved or the city still review the application according to the criteria?
Yes, it would still be reviewed under the criteria. The property owner's signature would indicate that they have at least looked at what's being submitted to the city, but the criteria still must match the master sign program.
So the final approval still falls in the planning department, signage on size, shape, form, color, compatibility, all of that, right?
Per the program.
Very good, okay. So thank you for that answer.
However, there is one thing that really is very important. And listen, I'm on your side because design is my livelihood and I'm very particular about how the end product is going to look. Because the amount of money that Sunny Skies and TAWA are putting into this project to make it look beautiful, signage can destroy everything. So we are very particular about that. However, what is also very important, in all fairness to the tenant, when, when we as a designer and then the owner, the landlord, sign something off, they have approved it as far as the size and all the compatibilities that you were just mentioning now. However, it's very difficult, and we've got to be fair to the tenant, to come in and for one individual to say they don't like it. It's, that, that could become a problem and we don't want that to happen. So I think that that situation would be very rare.
Well, that's one of the, my earlier question, asking your firm, is your firm gonna be involving?
Yes.
The design and approval process?
Yes.
Before the landlord signature?
Yes.
If they, if you are, then at least we can count on some understanding.
Absolutely right.
Because this project is like a 30-year-old project from day one. And over the years, I've seen signs coming in.
Tell me.
That are high-quality signs, some comes in as a non-acceptable signage.
Yeah.
And we have Omega come in, awarded a specific international design that we have to work with. I so happen I was involved with that. So, so there are national tenants, color and design and logo, and there are international tenants. And of course, there are some mom and pop local business.
Correct.
And trying to make a final product that are consistent, compatible, and acceptable in the overall quality of the project becomes a very important gatekeeping step. So that's, that's the question. I want to make sure that on the record, that if your company...
And I must, I'm very impressed, I've got to be honest. I'm very impressed with the questions and the comments that you have made because it doesn't often happen to me that any commissioner would even ask and mention the things that you've just been said. So kudos to you, I've got to be honest, it's... So kudos to you, I gotta be honest, it's it's great to hear.
After you sit on it for twenty some years, you 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 learn a few things over time.
I hate to tell you how many years I've been in the sign business, it's more years than I care to care to remember.
Okay, but anyway, as long as the director shows that.
Yes.
The designer of this signage package, together with the landlord, will review the individual tenant submission.
Fine.
And then meet the overall criteria and then the city has the final say, I think that's the right thing to do. So that we can have some protection.
Good.
Otherwise, they're gonna have signs on the on the storefront. The landlord may want to do it because, or the tenant wants to do it, the landlord may or may not because of the lease agreement. So we had problems like that before. So anyway, uh, thank you for the answer, but uh, back to my earlier question on page twenty.
On that size.
On the signage, the size of the sign. I I I just want to make sure that at the bottom of the sign at five foot, it's not gonna be a potential walking danger.
No.
That people will walk right into the sign at the bottom corner.
It's that that sign is set in an area where pedestrians cannot get to. And the reason for five feet is to lift it to a point where it's just a little bit taller than a motor car. Honestly, that's all it is, it's just a very simple directional sign. It's at the back of the building, so it doesn't pose any.
Correct, I want to make sure that that signage will be installed in the non pedestrian walking area.
Absolutely is.
I mean, the way you show it now is in the planner area, which still those people do walk under there at times, try to avoid the traffic. So I I just want to make a point that that bottom corner of the sign is not gonna be a walking hazard for for people that are five foot four inches and walking right into it at the high level.
Commissioner, I've been there, I chose that site personally. It's in an area where on it, they're just, first of all, there are no pedestrians in that area. It's at the back of the building and it's it's an entrance which is rarely at the back, not used that often. So that's all it is, it poses absolutely no threat to any pedestrian.
But but I guess the on the page twenty six, the overall five foot plus three foot, that's an eight foot sign.
Correct.
Top, I don't think that rendering shows a eight foot height.
Yes, so I'll tell you what the the problem is. On the big picture, it's that is correct. However, on if you're looking at the at the photograph, the the man standing next to the sign is six foot high.
Right.
On the on the rendering, the actual photograph, the small photograph, that's a mistake. That should be a little bit taller, that's why that's why it looks crazy and I apologize.
That was my question.
I know, no, you you're right as far as, I apologize for that, that should have been a little bit taller.
Because the 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 small photograph.
Yes.
Does not look like an eight foot sign compared to the a a normal person's height.
Right.
All right, so if it's that tall, then it would suit avoid that potential danger. That was my question earlier.
Right.
All right, so so I guess for the record, on page twenty six, on sheet twenty six, the color picture rendering that shows the additional parking in the rear signage proportion is incorrect. So it should it should reflect it correctly so that it will not be a potential danger for pedestrian. And I guess one last thing I have, compared to last month's submission and this month's submission, page twenty seven and twenty eight are were eliminated. Which is the tenant wayfinding and the pedestrian directional directory signage, are these signs are being eliminated?
Samantha, I need your help.
Uh, yes, Chairman Chen, members of the commission, that was a part of the original submittal that was presented to the commission on at the October meeting. The commission provided comments to review the overall design of those signage relative to the other proposed design in the center and asked the applicant to provide more information as to their inspiration for the design and the color choice. At the February meeting, in discussing the commission's comments with the applicant, the applicant decided to continue with the same design that was presented in October. And so at the last meeting, staff had recommended that since the comments had not been addressed, to not be considered as part of the sign program. And so to simplify the criteria for this meeting, those signage are not included in this criteria.
So they're gonna be not consider only for this meeting, or they come back later if they ever find there's a need for it?
That would be up to the ownership, yes.
Okay, so right now, we will not approve those two pages?
Yes, what's before the commission this evening is the precise criteria and the type of signage that will be permitted at the property.
Okay, understood, thank you very much, appreciate that, thank you, that's all I have, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. And following my Commissioner Chen's train of thought, what I understand is that the tenant will come to you for the signage approval or the design, whatever it is, and you will give them limitations or within the scope prior to coming to the city. Once you stamp it as approved, the signage, it'll come to the city. You mentioned a caveat to that, whereas and and correct me if I'm wrong, my impression was that once, your expectation was that once you approved it, there really should be no further review as to compliance to what the plan is or what the city requirements are. Am I correct in that assessment?
Not necessarily, so he here's what it is. You have a tenant, they're existing tenants right now, they're going to submit designs. It's not, the designs won't come from us, they'll come from their individual sign companies. But those those sign companies or the tenant will have a copy of this, which will lay out exactly what any other sign company will be allowed to do with regards to really more than anything else, square footage. This is the size of the sign you can have on your storefront, nothing bigger. There's your limitation. Within that, the design that anybody else submits to the landlord, to the owner, they will come to me and say, are you okay with this? I would hope that a hundred percent of them, we will give, say, fine, these are good, they meet all the criteria. Goes back to the landlord, he will sign it and it comes to you in the city, it's it's that simple. So nothing will come to the city without, not so much my signature, well, if I don't know whether it's essential to have the designer's signature on it. The most important is to have your landlord's signature so that they can submit it.
I I get you, I I think what I'm really asking is if once you sign it, you're good with it, will that application subordinate itself?
Oh, no.
To the city?
Oh, absolutely.
That that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that the city holds the ultimate.
Of course.
Okay.
Yes.
And and I think that's, I understand the the business decisions and and, you know, marketing and and all of that. Competitive competitive advantage, whatever have you, but it's gotta be compliant to both city rules and the commission rules.
Listen, we understand exactly where and who we are.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that your expectation was not that we're, that city was just gonna rubber stamp it because you rubber stamped it.
No.
Yeah, very, thank you.
Thanks, Chair, Sala.
I just have one comment, I appreciate that the landlord has created their own review process to filter out the the number of reviews that city staff has to review and and limit the number of work they have. I just wanna emphasize to you that, you know, international tenants, they may focus their business on a segment of the population here, but the sign is information for all visitors, it's part of the environment and the atmosphere for everyone to enjoy. And so I wanna emphasize that signage should predominantly be in English. And and if then, and if there are characters or logos in other languages, they should be translated to English so that everybody could enjoy that for the whole community.
It's interesting that you would say that because that's the, those are the same comments that have come from the landlord. They're very particular as to what goes on that building. And ex- exactly to what you said, they will adhere to that. I know it because it's been under discussion.
No further comments?
Yes, Commissioner Chen?
Just follow up with Commissioner Lopez, Sala's question. So I recall last time when we talked about the signage, says it Chinese is not used in the in all the signage. But the package says it would be limited to traditional Chinese, simplified Chinese is not allowed. So is that, I just wanted to have a.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, that's out of my jurisdiction, I wouldn't even have a clue. All I can tell you is that landlord have said that if I they, if they are going to be additional characters, I'm not sure on the language, but it's very limited to what they can do on that sign. They cannot dominate that sign, it's like, I think, what, twenty percent?
You mean foreign language?
Yes.
In proportionate to the the sign?
Yes.
The sign size, okay. So foreign languages are permitted for the the signage?
But it'll be very limited, they're not going to be able to put up a sign that's more than, I think, I think it was twenty percent that we were talking about to make sure that the characters remain in the English language and that any foreign language is going to be limited.
May I ask a follow-up really quick question, I apologize to interrupt.
Sure.
Is this written anywhere?
Good question.
Commissioner Lopez, it's on sheet five, under the second paragraph, that it is limited to the logo.
Okay, so there you got it on page three, under wall signs, primary wall sign must be in English, non-English characters are only permitted as part of a logo. So it it's really going to be limiting. Thank you. I can tell you one thing. There's a lot of effort that has gone into getting this right. The landlord is doing a beautiful job in painting and cleaning it up. And I can assure you that for me, the amount of time and effort that we've put into this, we want to see this project honestly as beautiful as you would like to see it and that's our intent.
Commissioner Chen, do you have anything else and I think Commissioner Chen also?
Appreciate that, thank you, yeah, the similar discussion happened in different projects in different city, different area. And what you have now, consider that those Chinese characters as part of the logo has been adopted by many other city, including City Irvine, because there are business that are traditional business. As like an old Chinese bank has the logo in Chinese, like a chop and a stamp type. And those has been approved because it's part of their traditional logo for all these years. So those who accepted in the City Irvine and there are certain other businesses that that had used that character as part of their business branding were accepted and it looks fine and those are acceptable. So I think the landlord had worked very hard trying to get to roll that into this this sign program so that we, the tenant can have to meet the need, but yet it will not become a area wall of signs that a lot of people do not understand what they are. I I try to put myself, go into Korea town and try to understand, when I drive down the Western and Eight, I I can't understand. I don't know where I'm at, I don't know what they're selling because I don't read the signage and become a big problem.
I'm with you all the way.
English is primary language, at least we know what it is, but a symbol of a character as part of the logo would would be no problem, so I I think we we just, I think they got it together on that.
Let me sim, let me simplify it for you. Yes, you're always going to have certain tenants that are major tenants who will have their logos and maybe a little bit more of the foreign characters than one would expect. And you're not going to, you're not going to lose a lease based on that. So we're going to be very particular about that and make sure that it's in proportion to the type of business that they have. However, it's the smaller tenants, the mom and pops, who come along and just put up eighty percent of foreign characters and something small as far as the English is concerned. And you're right, I have no clue what they are and what they're selling and these are the things that we're trying to stop and we will. Thank you, thank you.
One last design questions, so we've been talking about the wall signs a lot. I was wondering about the the main logo of the Tawa Gateway, is that only in black color? Is the one on the building, because there's a couple of different length rendering?
It's black during the day and there's a light behind it on the inside of the letter. So it will look, it shines the light onto the back wall and this the letter even at night will look white, I beg your pardon, will look black against, oops, against a light that shines up against the wall. How does one describe that?
So is illuminated at night?
Yes, but the light comes out of the back of the letter and lights up the wall so that the wall shines, has a white light to it and the letter looks black.
Is is that the yellow or gold that you showed as a background?
No.
Because the there's two images, the first one is on the cover page and actually the building is seen like gray and the black logo doesn't pop up that much.
No, this is, this was a rendering done by the architects and we just put it in here as a front page.
Because there's another rendering that is actually the, I mean, the original building color that the the logo actually stands out a lot more because your wall sign is one of the criterias is actually to provide some contrast to the building. That's why I was wondering if this is something that you are proposing for the main logo of the building or it would look different?
Let me check on one thing, just as we paint, the paint, the building is being painted.
The building has been painted, it's not as dark as.
I'm I'm sorry, can you speak at the podium for the recording?
So the building is being painted, but it's not as dark as what you see there, it's much lighter.
I can address this, I'm Justin Chan with Sunny Skies Terrace, the leasing manager for the site. The building has been painted, the gray on this rendering is not as dark as what the building is painted, it's a lighter gray. So that logo being black will stand out.
Okay, okay, that's good to know because I mean, based on the materials submitted and there's a bit of conflicting information.
It also varies on the light direction from the sun versus how the building looks, right? This part of the building specifically faces the northeast, so the sun during the daytime will be a lot brighter than it is during the afternoon time.
Okay, all right, thank you, so this is the comparison of the original and after?
Yes.
Okay.
As you can see, the light shade on the left side of that photo with the big tower lettering is brighter, so it, the building color looks lighter.
Yeah, it looks lighter.
So it all depends on the shadows.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it has enough contrast. It's not like this one, this render shows it's all branched in into each other.
Yes, this is also the shadows casting right on that building, which deteriorates from the contrast of the lettering of the T logo versus the building color.
So have you ever considered that, I mean, all those tenant logo put on there with all kind of colors, so colorful where your project logo is in?
It is limited in terms of where the tenants are allowed to put their logos on the building. It is not going to be as the current one, where they're basically anywhere and everywhere there's building space.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Wait, wait, gentlemen, if you may stand. I just want to ask you one quick question. Now that we talk about the building logo color, so during the daytime, it's black against whatever the wall paint color is, right? So you can see it?
Correct.
At nighttime, what color will be transmitting from that channel letter coming out? Do you know? I said it's set to be determined. I just want to know, is it going to be white, red, green? Because your rendering sets color to be determined.
I'll tell you what, go to page five.
Page five?
Page five. I'm not sure if you've got the same updated.
No, before that. The one before that. It's the one before the...
And before that, page four?
Yes, it has, it should look like this.
It has these pictures on.
Oh.
That's five.
There you are, okay. What you see up on the screen?
Yeah.
Just look at the word Whole Foods.
Whole food?
Top lot. The top logo on the left.
The top on the left.
The green one, yeah.
So those letters during the day are black?
Is that?
They're black on whatever background, and the background has got to be a light color.
Right.
At night, the letters are still black, but there's a light inside the letter that shines up on the wall. So the difference is, on the T, it's black during the day, and at night, it'll be black, but the light that you see around it will be white.
Okay, so you're using bat-lit halo coming from the back?
I told you, I'm impressed every time you say something. You're right, it's halo.
But there are other ways to do it, of course. Your black letter during the day can turn out to be white at night, because 3M mix, those perforated, final.
If you go to the pile.
And if you have the light in the back that's white, it'll be, it'd become white letter.
Yes.
I guess for city's understanding and for planning department, it would be good to design it correctly now rather than to be determined later, because I think one of those thing I see is that your big sign that says nighttime.
Correct, it's black during the day, and it has that, I beg your pardon, it's black during the day, the letters on the white background, and at night, it's got that 3M film on the letter, it'll show up as white at night.
That's perfectly fine.
There you are.
I just want to make sure on the record that that is what the letter is.
Oh, yes.
Because they do, they can make a black letter turn into a white letter at night if you turn on the light.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine, so it's for the record then, all right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lopez, are you thinking of something?
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just kind of want to reiterate a few things. Number one is that the logos will be primarily in English, and a character will be, so you'll have English lettering, and any logos may have another characters in another language.
Yes.
I can just say Chinese. We're also want to, it's our understanding that your firm will review all signs before the tenant signs, the landlord signs off, and the signs application comes to the city, correct? It's our understanding that the, the free standing sign in the back of the building on sheet 26, that it is number, a few things on that one. You show the sign, the picture where it's kind of photoshopped in that space, that is not to scale. The true height is what's shown on the larger image, which is eight feet tall. And I think there were some comments regarding tripping hazards, and that is a planter area, and hopefully there'll be some greenery on the ground, because the image shown here looks like it's just kind of dirt and old plant materials. So that, we're not here to talk about that, but just saying that hopefully. And the other thing, I just want to make sure we all understand, is that the logo, the big T on the front will be black with halo lighting, and the halo lighting will be white.
Correct.
On that other sheet that you've shown, there's halo lighting in green, in pink, and in other colors, but...
Those are just ideas for any sign company that, yeah.
So, but for that T, we are looking at...
Absolutely.
White light, more like the Alhambra sign.
Yes.
At the lower...
Yes.
Right-hand corner. Okay. It is now 7:27, and do we have any public comment since we started?
No public comment.
Okay. So the time for public comment is now closed, and it is our turn to deliberate this project. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Chu.
Yes, we have reviewed this project for three times. I think this meeting is most productive to, because the applicant designer actually is helping to clarify a lot of design questions. And I believe that the presentation of the package is not perfect, because there's a lot of information is not consistent, like the rendering, sometimes it shows the original building color, and sometimes it shows like a proposed color by the architect, which is too dark than the, the building actually is painted at. So I think there's the information given in the package is inconsistent and making it harder to understand the full design intent and the scope of work. But with the clarification tonight, I think it helps to, to clarify, and also I believe maybe some modification to the package is necessary to, to, to maintain the integrity of the, of the design set, and given like a good guideline for the future reference for the city as the gatekeeper of the sign package. Thank you.
Commissioner Chang.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I, I think you have captured all the discussion, and if staff capture that same discussion result and the agreement with the applicant, I think it's ready. Because I think we understand that this is the intent of the landlord to upgrade the entire quality of the project. They want to clean up all the previous signages all over the place. And it is the intent to give it a more quality building, quality signage, clear direction, and all of that. So the intent is there. I think with all this discussion of these many months, I can see it coming together nicely. So as long as staff can capture all the things we discussed on the individual tenant signage, order directional signage, and, and they work with the qualified signage people to understand the construction of the signage and get the right quality sign there, the project will come out right. So I'm prepared to approve that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
I, I agree, it's come a long way. It's still kind of confusing. I agree with my fellow commissioner as to, I, it's beyond me why it wasn't like really redone and redrafted. I, I think that a, a different set of instructions, quasi designs should be redone and done so that the city has a clear guideline instead of having to read minutes and things, what was it this or was it that? I also want to, as a condition of approval, make, make sure that those two way signs that were omitted from this, that they are required. If the tenant ever, if the landlord ever wants to put those up, they have to come by here. I do want to strongly state that. So, as far as difficulty for staff to redo a lot of this stuff and then, I think the owner should be on the applicant to have it redone, and including with the conditions and the statements that we have made. And I also want to reiterate that I strongly believe that the ultimate signage approval has to reside within the city and, and without question. Thank you.
I think that is a given. The city has the right to deny or approve, but it will be based upon whatever is the approved design master plan for the signage program. Okay? Anything else? Okay.
That is all, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo.
The proposal here is a major improvement over the existing, and I think the project has been adequately reviewed and vetted, so I'm comfortable proceeding and moving on with an approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think what we have here is when a, a package like this is submitted, different colors, different questions on background painting, looking at the Photoshop image isn't quite to scale. A lot of our questions are because the package isn't quite right. And I know this is going to come back to us. Your firm's going to come with pedestrian signs. Your firm's going to probably come back with a, an public art program, unless you're going to pay that to the city separately. But we need to have a complete package that's correct to the best of your ability. And I think Commissioner Chu is right on. When we see the image of tenant sign, tenant sign, the same word over and over, red font, same size, same location, you could do better than that. And I think that's where a lot of our questions are coming from, and this is the third meeting on this. So I think if your firm in the future, with future submittals, you know, work on this so it, so we're given the information that we can vote on and understand it completely. The other thing is that I believe, and Sam, doesn't this go in the project file? For, this is what you're going to compare for any sign. So staff comes and goes, but this will be in the project file. This is what staff is going to be referring to for any signs. And as Commissioner Chen was talking about, you know, he was involved 30 years ago. Sam wasn't here 30 years ago. And there's been multiple people in this position all this time. So this is not only important for us, but is also for staff in the future. So please do your best in putting the package together that's going to be voted on. And if we're, and I think that makes a big difference for us. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I do want to share that information as a former city staff member, actually for the City of San Gabriel and City of Pasadena, it makes a big difference. So with that, is there a motion on this project?
I'd like to make a motion to approve MSP 21-006.
Second?
I would second the approval with the understanding that maybe we may want the applicant to send in a final copy of the master sign program, based on what the discussion of approval, that city staff will have a final copy that reflect all conditions mentioned tonight, so that it's consistent and it can be used for the next 30 years. So that, would that be okay?
I concur with the...
I third that.
Shall we have a first and a second roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I skipped you this time. My apologies.
Sorry. That's my maiden name. Sorry.
My apologies. If you would like, I can go in a normal route then. Okay. Chair Romo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Five As motion passes.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you so much. Next item is item B 70...
May I ask for a quick break?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Samantha. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That is between the one-story commercial plaza and then the newly constructed mixed-use building. So it is unique in its condition in that it does not have direct street frontage. And so the property owner and the tenant did have the option to install a wall sign per the approved master sign program. But in the applicant, the business owner feels that it may be excessive for its location and only needed minor identification for pedestrians when searching for the building. So the circle is where a wall sign can potentially be installed, but the request this evening is criteria for the blade sign. And so specifically, the blade sign before the commission this evening is what's shown on the slide is for K-Pop Republic. They are a new business that is in the center. So what is shown here on the slide is exactly what the property owner and the business owner intends to install, exactly as shown. In fact, I think they have the exact sign with them this evening that they will show. It will follow the criteria of the center where it will have a halo effect. It is a box. I believe the proposed size is no greater than two square feet. It's approximately 16 inches by 24 inches. It will have that halo effect as shown in the image below. That's the evening image, and then the white would be the daytime image. So essentially, as stated in the staff report, the only added criteria this evening would be the last page to the criteria. All other sheets have already been reviewed and approved by the commission, but it's presented as a package because in moving forward, this will be the singular blade sign and criteria for this one tenant space until the property owner decides to come back with any other modification depending on a tenant's request, but that will be done before the commission and not administratively with the city's staff. So this concludes staff's presentation, and the designer is present this evening as well as the business owner.
Good evening. My name-
Wait, sir. We're going to have clarifying questions? Um, with, I'm sorry. We're going to have clarifying questions for staff, then we'll turn it over to you-
Okay.
-for your presentation. So any clarifying questions for staff? Commissioner Tu?
Yes, my question was that is the blade sign we're looking at now is the only scope of what we're going to review tonight?
That is correct.
The amendment of the original approved?
The only modification.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cheng?
No, I'm fine.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Vice Chair Salo?
Yeah, I have one question for staff. How would today's approval affect future tenants who wanted a similar sign?
Then those tenants would have to come back to the commission because specifically, this evening is for the singular blade sign and for this specific tenant.
Okay.
And this was in discussions with the property owner, whether it was criteria for any other tenant, and it was specified that it was just for the singular tenant space.
Okay, thank you.
I do not have any questions for staff, so at this time, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Reitz. I first became involved in this project all the way back in 2013 at its inception. I worked for the firm Sanchez Camps, or now known as SKA Design. It's a firm that was focused on doing architectural graphic programs for multiple kinds of projects, large-scale, small-scale. GL Capital came to us and asked us to develop a sign program for this project, which included an existing shopping retail entity, and also it included a mixed-use element, which was a residence, a condominium building. So we designed a sign program, a comprehensive program for the entire project to try and keep in the theme of the Spanish Mission look, which is essential for this particular district. We followed the guidelines and the code for the city of San Gabriel. The current code for the city of San Gabriel does not address blade signs or projection signs. In LA, they call this a projection sign, and there are certain specific requirements that you have to have when you install a sign like this, height limits and projection from the wall. When we first designed this project, the limits of the retail elements that were housed in the residential building did not exceed beyond this intersection that you see in the photograph to the left. In other words, the storefront that is further on down, where you see this sign, this sign projecting off the wall, was not originally, as far as I can recall, intended to be a storefront. I think it was a meeting room or some kind of event room for the residence, you know, residential unit, and it never ended up being useful that way. So it became, in the course of time, as things do in multiple projects, things change and needs change. And so this is what happened here. And if you look at the entry into this pedestrian alleyway, it's really not a vehicular context. It's mostly for pedestrians. It was intended to give residents from the residential unit direct access into the retail element of the project. It appears to me that walkway is maybe eight feet wide, so it's like a wide corridor in a hospital. In hospitals, we use blade signs to identify restrooms, so anybody walking down the corridor can see that there's an amenity there that they may want to access. So I wasn't involved with this signage when it was installed or built, but I think it's an appropriate way to handle this discreetly and understatedly. It's visible only from beside the street and visible only from the entrance from the parking area. And so it kind of indicates there is a destination down here, a storefront, which somebody may want to go in and see what they're offering. The sign is 16 inches high, 24 inches wide. It's 2.6 square feet, which is fairly understated in terms of size. The sign is an internally illuminated can. And here's where it kind of differs from the, from the sign guidelines or criteria for the city of San Gabriel. Because the letters are so small and the letter stroke is so thin, it's very difficult to execute a true halo illuminated sign. Also, you would be adding bulk with fabricated letters, you know, for the K-pop part of this sign. You'd be adding bulk, and it would be sticking out from the face of the sign. I don't think we can do a halo illuminated treatment for this particular sign, given its small size. There are limitations that, you know, you can work with in terms of fabricating a letter this small and getting all of the content in there, the lighting in there that would provide a halo illumination. So George came to me, the owner, the developer of the property, came to me and asked me if I would help him with this modification. So basically, we're here to propose a modification to the master sign program, which includes the blade sign, which was not previously included. So I prepared an illustration, added it to the existing approved sign criteria, which sets standards and guidelines for any tenant who's coming in to the development who wants to lease a storefront. They have to abide by the standards and guidelines. This sign, this blade sign will only be for this particular unit for obvious reasons, so it can be seen when somebody looks down that alleyway from either direction, they can see that there's a storefront there. So in preparing this document for George, knowing how the city of San Gabriel would like to stick with an halo illuminated treatment on most of the signage, I proposed an alternate method wherein an outline execution of the letters might be an appropriate way of sort of faking the halo illumination. It would cut down on the amount of light that you have here coming through these bold-faced letters with, you know, maybe an eighth or quarter-inch outline. That would be internally illuminated and, you know, technically would be an internally illuminated sign, but it would not, it would relate to halo illuminated signs on the rest of the project. So I don't think the sign is big enough, really, to present, you know, an obtrusive problem in terms of design. So I think the K-Pop Republic, this sign existing, I don't think it's a vast departure from what I saw in the previous presentation with regard to blade signs. I think it's, you know, a viable approach, and I hope that the design commission would consider approving it as it is so that we could put the sign up, install it, and the tenant can have his exposure. So just to make it simple and brief.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I want to thank you for making this submittal easy to read, easy to understand. I don't want to go too much into this, but you have made it very clear on what is being proposed and where and why. So with that, it's now time for the commissioners here around the dais to ask clarifying questions of you. So we will start with Commissioner Tu.
Yes, I thank you for the presentation that makes it very, like, clear what is this about, and I agree with Chair Romo. This package is much easier to read and understand. It's a really good package. So my question was that, looking at the image of the actual building with the signage on, is that the actual signage size on it or just a Photoshop, like this image?
That's an actual photograph with this sign installed.
This sign, okay.
Can I come in?
Sure.
If you look right here, right there, that's the sign.
Right.
That's that sign installed on the wall. It's very understated in terms of scale, you know, relates well to these light fixtures in terms of its scale and size. This is looking from the parking lot down the pedestrian alley toward the street. This is looking from the street toward the parking lot, probably the, um, the outlets within the building.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask is actually, when I look at the image, it's hard to find the sign. Like, I mean, the sign is for you to really to get notice and so that you know what is going on beyond the front door, but I understand the size of the blade sign is kind of like a standard size for, in the industry, but putting in this location, in a way, it kind of like fading out or like it spreads in into the whole background. So I was wondering, what is your thought about that?
Dennis, if you can respond into the podium for recording purposes.
Could you speak into the mic right over there, please, sir? Thank you.
Well, I think the alleyway is fairly narrow and kind of an intimate setting. And if we were to put a wall sign above the window, you have the arched windowway, which is, is a situation in and of itself that might not be conducive to the particular design of the sign. You have the awnings that project out, which can also intrude upon the view shed toward that sign. So I think the blade sign actually functions quite well, being in line with the lighting fixtures on the wall. And this is, this is something that the tenant wanted to do so he could be seen from both directions entering the alley. With a wall sign, you can't really do that, and we needn't propose blade signs for the rest of the storefronts that are all visible from the parking lot because you have a clear view of the storefront and the sign above each storefront when you're in the parking lot. But this is a unique situation, completely different from approaching storefronts from the parking lot. So having a double-faced sign that can be visible from two directions is beneficial to the storefront.
Okay, yes, understand that. Yeah, thank you.
Chair Cheng?
Thank you, Chair. I think the blade sign is a good solution. I just want to ask a couple of questions. Is there sufficient lighting currently with your, with that sign right there? Can you see it during nighttime? Do we need that, that internal lit sign? Because a blade sign in that small area will work. You don't want to have the blade sign too bulky with all the lighting and all of that. So, and the top one reads a lot better. If there's sufficient lighting, general lighting in the area that you can see it-
Right.
-I much rather see that because it does the job for you. So I've seen it during the day, but I have not seen it during the night. So I don't know. Maybe you and the ownership can tell us.
Well, there's going to be quite a bit of light cast through these letters. The letters will read. The background of the sign obviously is black, but the lettering, the name of the store will pop and will be quite visible and quite easily read.
So it's readable with the current lighting condition-
Right, yes.
-during the night?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all I, is that the exact-
I don't think there's much ambient light other than what's given from those light fixtures that are mounted to the wall surface. So it's not really a brightly lit area, and-
That is the dimension, 24 by 16, right there in front of us?
It's 24 inches wide, 16 high.
Okay. All right, that's the exact size?
It calculates out to 2.6 square feet.
Okay. I don't have any further question. I just, I just think that sign reads a lot better than the alternate panel that you, in the bottom of the page.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I just want to, as someone who goes to this shopping center, there, and has walked day and night and uses that alley, the lighting is appropriate and it feels safe, and I think that's number one. That does feel like a safe place to walk, and the way the development was done up, it makes it good, so I want to just address that.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you for your submission. I think it's very clear to all of us exactly what we're trying to achieve here. And now, I assume, I guess it's a dual question for you and for staff as well. If a different tenant occupies this space, then I assume this, the sign would be replaced by something else, I suppose, or would, would, it would have to be re-permitted for a different tenant, let's say, Banana Republic or something along those lines.
Yes, Commissioner Lopez, with the new tenant, they always have the option to install a wall sign per the master criteria, so that is an option. And based on the commission's decision this evening and the approval of the criteria for a blade sign, they would also have the option to install a blade sign with their own text following the criteria that's approved this evening.
Okay, so it can be limited to only this tenant as opposed to extending to another tenant, or?
Yes, tonight is for the singular blade sign for this tenant's base.
I see, okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Vice Chair Salo?
No questions for the applicant. What they're proposing makes sense, yeah.
I'd just like to add that I think with the success of this development, it's nice that space that wasn't thought of as retail space, the adaptive reuse of this space to accentuate the center and to get more pedestrian footage going up and down that little walkway is, it's a compliment to-
Which will affect the space.
To the space and to the design of the center and to its success in San Gabriel. I just want to reiterate that I appreciate the completeness and the comprehensiveness of the submittal. I think I do like the proposed as what you have here shown rather than the alternative. I think that is very readable. I think if you're in the back, just outside that door, you can still read that sign clearly with the lights, with the current lighting in this room. So I think that what you're proposing can really help the tenant and get some visibility there, and I agree that a wall sign at this spot wouldn't necessarily work as well. And to Commissioner Lopez's comment, this sign is only, this type of sign is only for this site at the development center, so this is the only space that would have this type of illuminated blade sign. So I think that you have presented something very comprehensive, and it's now up to us to see if we have any public comment on this and have deliberation amongst ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Damian, do we have any-
No public comment at this time, I'm sure.
Okay, all right. So we can now deliberate this project. Oh, before I do that, the time for public hearing is now closed. It is 8:08. So deliberation. Commissioner Tu?
Yes, I like the clarity of the, of the package, and I think I'm ready for approval of the project.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yeah, the project turned out to be a very nice addition to the city, and this little addition, that modification, actually solved that particular spot. It was a challenging corner. So I have no problem modifying the master sign program to accommodate that, and the solution is perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I think the proposed signage is, I think it fits that area really well, and I really appreciate the completion, the completeness of the package, and so I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
No exceptions taken, ready to approve.
Thank you very much. And so with that, is there a motion to approve this in a second?
I'll go ahead and move to approve. Planning case number MSP 25001, master sign program modification per staff report.
Is there a second?
I second to approve.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Five A's, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I wish the tenant much success. I'll walk by your shop.
Place in K-Pop.
Yeah. All right, so we go on to item number four, comments from our planning manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Just a reminder to complete online applications for, to serve on the commission, that is due by this Thursday, I believe the 14th. So make sure to get in your applications. There may potentially be interviews. That's being determined by the city clerk's office, so there potentially may not be interviews or just one day of interviews, but please continue to check your emails as they send out those notifications. And also on April 10th is the commission dinner, and the city clerk's office will be sending notifications and reminders for that, and that's it for staff.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Tu, do you have any comments or reports?
No, I don't have comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Cheng?
No comment. I guess staff got my new address, so I received a package of my new address. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lopez?
No comments, nothing to report.
Vice Chair Salo?
One minor comment. Just out of curiosity, I asked an AI prompt about me, myself, and it started going off, and it told me that I served on this commission when I was assigned to it and when my expiration comes up. I was shocked. It knew more than I did.
Was that ChatGPT or? Oh, quick question. The one subject for reappointment are?
Yes, that's Commissioner Tu, Commissioner Cheng, and Chair Romo.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
The only thing I have to say is I was in a very walkable place, and it makes such a difference having walkable communities, feeling safe, having tons of people walking around. It just makes you feel warm, happy, safe. You want to eat, shop, linger, and I think that we had two different projects today. The size and scopes, very, very different. I go to the second one a lot and looking at how a site is addressed to meet pedestrians, greet pedestrians, make pedestrians feel friendly. I remember the first time walking through that little pedestrian walkway and seeing that tile mural and just kind of standing there for a little bit and just really enjoying that space. So I hope San Gabriel builds more of these pedestrian areas to kind of elevate our community. So with that, I think we're going to adjournment, and we will be here at our, oh, April, April, okay. I'm very happy. I'm very happy because I thought this, we were going to have two meetings in March, but reading my script here, we are adjourning this to our regular meeting of the Design Review Commission on Monday, April 28th at 6:30 PM, City Hall, 425 South, Mission Drive, second floor, City Council chambers. So thank you very much.